Ni ndakwara mukshoku si memba mazahanga kudirangu echi intu eti ni ndangwu mchirewe imewa awasia omrieti eji intu kataan kwa president wa deta presidensho initiative o wendewa president umkumuntu twortiko twapariyameti twawaserekare kungaka mseven mwenekavita umkumuntu akayi jakuwansa obsinje wu wu che nokwengobo mukamandee kurgarkumorwenda mkaga nenya hata edo nemiyaka makumuka president ra ransobor nazibarawatukufurka nagambarawatukhinga nagambarawatukomashindie mwen kuyaridirekutungobshoborozzi obuhanga yamhiri ya teka teka havin tu edya bantuwa tu ndiri edya kurokakuwe yombooro nubotoa ne wumulugokuwanza omriisa na di maramati wumulugokuwanza mbagaraketu mchiteru mungarawa yeme not kurebe romana narugomushomero akayi jakhakora akaguramotoka akagurabenzia akagurani lisus deva kakimunguega atogun oktuzeyo uge gumarsan akavazaktu ndebidire ya tu ndebienda atu nomuge hata na aine motoki itano eda wakazumshanzu mwen ogonomuloga presidenti oguyaye tanditiri mwen etichituru erizo wa ni ndakwa gambala katanituru wa president charabomba saias chaza busheni kunk echi twa vetera erizo wa kuchia guma romra yini yame charanda kukuzinga mom charzinga mom na win fact twacheisa twachomta mwen ni ndakwasiima awantoa wizobiri awizobiri kujia wati omgoretoa wumchirewe esionaza kundireta kumre wanjitata mwen nyentaka rekwarabu nomwene mbesomboze otuwe sheliabu muretoa di remu kagerankay ni ndakwasiima bantuwa omutwokuwanza o wachireme yireho akachiremeraho bakamtamba tamba o wogama nyawa professor kandabare reverend nuprofessor mlanga ogu director general mchiteru mungak nwea shomere echi choneki mukurewa president umsena nakamshaba no saias no agurkati professor no saku nyambo mrieti professor yitirizzi kuyaridirekutungobshoborozzi obuhanga yamhiri ya teka teka havin tu edya bantuwa tu ndiri edya kurokakuwe yombooro nubotoa ne wumulugokuwanza omriisa na di maramati wumulugokuwanza mbagaraketu mchiteru mungarawa yeme not kurebe romana narugomushomero akayi jakhakora akaguramotoka akagurabenzia akagurani lisus deva kakimunguega atogun akavazaktu ndebidire ya tu ndebienda atu nomuge hata na aine motoki itano eda wakazumshanzu mwen ogonomuloga presidenti oguyaye tanditiri mwen etichituru erizo wa ni ndakwa gambala katanituru wa president charabomba saias chaza busheni kunk echi twa vetera erizo wa kuchia guma romra yini yame charanda kukuzinga mom charzinga mom na win fact twacheisa twachomta mwen ni ndakwasiima awantoa wizobiri awizobiri kujia wati omgoretoa wumchirewe esionaza kundireta kumre wanjitata mwen nyentaka rekwarabu nomwene mbesomboze otuwe sheliabu muretoa di remu kagerankay ni ndakwasiima bantuwa omutwokuwanza o wachireme yireho akachiremeraho bakamtamba tamba o wogama nyawa professor kandabare reverend nuprofessor mlanga ogu director general mchiteru mungak nwea shomere echi choneki mukurewa president umsena nakamshaba no saias no agurkati professor yitirizzi kuyaridirekutungobshoborozzi yachikandakwemba mwen nyentaka rekwarabu na atira nagbalewa kundireta nagbalewa entuwe kana zire mwen eda wanesu wati ndirka ndirwa mukagutukire mungak na di amkagutukwe nhatu noliva nde mwe wankumsheshi oyumtsigaz olunwusho bruzyukutiru wa ni twasakidenda na tkatankuridenda nwea ndakwasiima district rastaf na badiwe bataha nwa taku manikiru echi busheni twimuka twazabsheni twataaya ya bariva echi ometiware turemchizanga awasa ngawa kabro kuchia kira kuchia kira awa recommendation za professor ni ndakwasiima gambala recommendation na ba yokuwanza awa nyasanga mwen imich imba na imwane yire mwen mbo mriya wumuntiana ndakwihira na ahiru mtena ahiru wumwameka yugu wa horra mwen imichsho mhangwa echi wa ntele imichsha mriya hayewe edya bantuwa nwa batalu mrichurura nomerkazu mukamandee professor na badiya in sanga I'm going to speak this one in English We are the only people in Chiruhula district who know how the dollar looks like Dora Dora mchiteru mwen yamhiri we have them here because they pass here we have dollars passing here we have all the monies that you can think about devanya rwanda franka azaba zaire tuzine every money that's why you omutwene nhatu mebedire na wakuzamara hata mwe nnerkurrana so ogomichha professor gambala president umsena na president yagana guman ogua kabiiri arhemishe anndeta nomchimania kumadirepuma mwe shka omshana kumadirepuma bashanangu sanga ni yakchiza yomshana omo western region nubu uganda yon professor na uganda yon bama nyamto endakwesasola system hapa hasasola system nezakuyamba o izova kantwa gatitita professor yainstikatini zasan echi amhiri nempia zaga wazur president umsena yajira yashtiris mwen acham terrenationalist movement mungak mwen hati nimpendera echatuzine hati derekutwa murekutwa feri professor azakutuganda derekutwa feri faktori zezu yomu ijobtwa ramuire mukamandee echi amani ijobtwa ramuire mwa kandukchidiri twashange kuma twasakura production esinta kwasagambala kunkani ndakwa gambala kuparazon mwe wuzi esukore mende yon twangwunmto yes hatkurugura kora isochi mwe wunu hata mwe wunu deva sheti ndabire so ebinda wa shumirawa indirewa yan wazakutuganda umsena nakazare kumite umsena umsena umishe kumite kyon etimukurewa mwen umsena umishe ni nde choma ni nde choma o wachirela katiyontia nuprofessor mlanga hati ore orukuzakurewe romana romana yazaru wamhetta dani mukako mwen ni ndangwu tusimawa tawat wateranga rosamani nion tomuzi ndalansini yete mukamandee so hona yamminister you are most welcome ne ndira awa sanga nawachiru mchiteru mungaruru hanga witu awokuwa erizo wa yene nteka teka echi amagiro chakuva tuko o chiareta minister yagira abatuwa biyakuwa echi areta minister netaka riya factory nwe wengomuntu nesima mukama awokuwa inkumiwiri nenya mwa machimachewa ndee kani busheni president yantere yamboza chimine taka nyarazinga antieku tinemwenda ni ndakwameka yu factory yamatoke I'm young president is okay yagalka yantere zobe li ndi nwea kainadoktamurangu yandi nangfatswe yanyenndeta ndi kani owemwe awantu awa with baridas ba factory kuganinkumiwiri nenya so yantora nwa machiwachiwa ndina wamheta board member wa PBD kuganyire bantuwa so I've been together na professor mlanga trabilumbindi ensosizismere mwa kati tumita kungaro angasi timwe nakerukumus story because abantuwi ntabaragam kunka ni wobani kwenizere kunu ya kani manya from the start until there is a pilot planted onkwa yobizwe twa labidem na ngana sanga basafari bati mugo na vayina onkati trabilumbindi up to now nese nde zemukugamba nui awa kono wazare munti but wanjire nde isayome keti kado kwa rava gambiri pa doya factory in sanga so izova na ngwa twelto suppose doctor you remember o kurotinga outlet ya toku products eh isezumo arewa awa mwa testing edya mwa ire kukanu zakoenda anoutlet awa tukumala kumeni muzomukuratoke products muzwaruwa doctor kandakamba na weni njedana zakwixi to munkolo anatimye otherwise mwe wale kutebe kalisomukolo and ebindi my chairman hona yamminister doctor retired canor wamrama director general reverend florence muranga I don't know where the eating up brick is seated my brother peter if you are around the vice chair person chiruhula district and executive members minister wawaksi hona yamminister azizi mayor executive yawena speaker PBD team awa bantuwa sanga awa bantuwa churura awase churita variyaha na wakuindeza churura nasange mukama simu erizo wa tiriangi yegba bini awokuwa bantuwa inokoruka sheshe kana yegba yegba wena kasta wisha tukuritima nda a director tukusima ebini tewyo tukoreyiri tu nka churura tureyire gemazima hona yamminister tureyire amuzi tureyire tukuritima nda a director tukusima ebini tewyo kubasa kuroxira buka diyavuta muarewa biscuit si kande yon na ngagamba birtenu free kinku maniokubaki kuchivulu radio mriyan kore professor yani yekati gamba kunka ezabuto ezimbienda mani zurumu a new area echi toche kenyene kuyankay omurtote tukaza nyarazinga twashanga yaba awa kazi igana makumiya tano nwa haya nku kureyaba nwa haya omuntu nwa mte rakuwa ebaki ti eryo na di hatomu daki ma hesikanda turiyontu tukaza nyarazinga twashanga awa bantuwa bushanomu tuwetu eti avu kati ashiri ebini tewyo kuchiria ebino kuziri orto kuchiko kurewa mwen yamminister tu irena tu edesa hata nokutabu mera chi intichum ne itu katutetu amashake itu nungoga taha naga diendu mwen ovu novu ire bogakuzesu mukudirekutu o guru mwen ekendeki rahu ni ndakwasiima hona yamminister mani nteze itu na zo hatuzhono chirozhonoi nombazi tuche yechonka andruwa chedambi auturgambira minister tureyizomba go kuwiti na goba ni kimanisa nukuzakuchindri ebini yon ebini msimu a tibiya professor mlanga tibiya hona yamminister tibiya mukago tibiya mpc tibiya safari ebini tewyo nebiintu ebiri pate itu ya ragani ya enara emu ebinyaragani saba na mukama yu presidenti yu ere kabuta umsena kunkana wukuronda wakuzewa kondor nicheru o no minister mukama simu yeah honourable minister allow me to observe the chief administrative officer here but also member of my board and management mr chiveru we hello c5 chairperson and my friend mr safari the mayor of this great upcoming city I believe all members of councils of chiruhula and the municipality all people of goodwill protocol observed allow me to speak in a hybrid of runya koli richiga and uganda and english I think of that way we shall be able to arrive I want to say that is I thank god first and foremost omuganda gambanti awafa wapapa when you die early you miss seeing a lot of things if I had died I would not have thought this would come to pass because when his excellency commissioned this initiative we thought that the ITP which is industrial technology park because there were two components to the initiative and the technology business incubator which was in busheni are going to move hand in hand but as it were to be the industrial technology park became stale and sterility was partly because of the laxity of the leadership at the time so I want to take a special observation of the current leadership of chiruhula for the way you've really taken it as you person accountability to ensure that this stellar part of the project comes to be because the reality of the matter is that the story will never be fully told if we don't have the space and facility to upscale most of what we started in busheni I want to apologize that I came late and naja late awokuwa I was ambushed as I came out nava media monita and the other media they don't always report very positively about government programs so I didn't want to give them an opportunity to report what I'd not said so we took almost an hour to go through what we've done they were visibly shocked at what we have done much as we didn't have time to show them the inside of this story so really to put the issues on board is that we we didn't really I wouldn't say that we gave away everything in busheni because we didn't have the space we don't have enough space in busheni if we do the things we we are undertaking right now in expanding the facility and establishing the holding center for the bananas I think the space would almost be finished so we cannot talk about expanding and yet when we started most of what we started with was supposed to be a showcase of the bigger picture of what was yet to come so the fact that we could not move whatever was taking off to another level was very, very limiting and it was not only unfortunate for the people in chiruhula but also unfortunate for the whole Uganda which was investing so heavily into this enterprise I have brought books that talk about the whole story of PBD at the end of my speech I'm going to donate the minister a copy of this commercialization book in which the whole story of how the sanga was supposed to stimulate the investment into this whole process because many people have been asking now how do we come on board and really the way the private sector was supposed to uptake was all spilt into the sanga component I'm happy to say that because of the team I lived Because Sangha, as your EROC, ebli, you know, elaborated on it. Ya chigamba kurunchi. Sangha, you will have a unique position. I have no doubt that you stand the opportunity to be the future city of this western part. Because Masaka is very near, you know. Yes, naadi ra. Ntsangam, mwinongiisha, avokwa. Position, ya location, ya town agei. Nebawa access ku town zona ekuru. Kurugavuganda, kuika Mbarala, kuika Ivanda, kazo, na border points. You know, for us in Busheni, we strive to get to the market. But if anything you do at Sangha would automatically flow into the marketplace. And that's what we actually now resolving to look at. Optimizing the second revi addition aspects. To be at Sangha, you know, especially the things that have got shorter shelf life would do much, 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 much better positioned in Sangha than in Busheni. And to that end, that's why when we looked at the challenge of establishing a bigger bakery, we thought that one of the first items we should plant at Sangha is a mega bakery. And that means not only opportunity, but a lot of jobs. Job opportunity for this area. I know that engineer Ali wants me to read this paper because it has all the history. And I want to say that, Honore Minister, I hope it will not cause offense to anybody because we want to state the facts that has brought us this infertility as the year so that we can correct this once for all and move forward as a team towards the development that we are all looking for. So the Board and Management Committee at Pibit continues to appreciate your continued support to all efforts and initiatives here that value addition of the green banana intended to exploit the domestic market, regional and international niche markets. This indeed is a novel domestically grown sector that is indigenous and is steadily becoming a huge catalyst or transformation impact for the socioeconomic transformation in our country. Towards that aspiration, a lot of initiatives have been undertaken to acquire the saved space for the Industrial Technology Park, including the following. His Excellency, the President of the Republic of Uganda in 2004, gave a directive to the Ministry of Agriculture and More Industry and Fisheries to give 20 hectares to Pibit for establishment of a green banana at ITP Sangha as a scaling up platform and as part of the Pibit project. As well put, this was consequent to the fact that it was realized that Sangha has got the space and the good positioning and location for industrial base, but also has got the prospect of tapping into the energy resource which we wanted to use for the drawing purposes, that is the solar energy. In 2010, Honore Bright Ramama, that is six years later, then Ministry of State for More Industry instructed NAGRIK and DB to give the 20 hectares to Pibit. By 2008, actually, the Ministry of Finance commissioned us to do a business model of what we need in terms of land for the ITP. And we did it, and the virtues were done. And this space was earmarked, encompassing 163 hectares in all. By 2010, Pibit carried out a study of the establishment of ITP at Sangha and came up with a master plan that required the 163 hectares under the Morphed. This prompted Pibit Management Board to sit down with NAGRIK DB Management Board and find a way of developing synergies with NAGRIK in establishing the ITP. I remember the letter that came from NAGRIK at that time is that they had no objection to giving us all the land, provided Pibit could evidence synergies that would flow into the livestock benefits. And we sat down and we had a full day at NAGRIK. And by the time we parted, everybody was saying this is the best that we can do for this country to bring the banana industry alongside the livestock industry. The Sangha Municipality consequently gazetted the saved land for livestock to, from livestock to industrial development. The meeting recommended the two parties to enter into an MOU. Ministries of the meeting and the drafting MOU were all cleared by the Solista General and available. To note is that between 2010 to about 2018, NAGRIK and DB faced management challenges and dynamic changes that halted progress on the agreed milestones. But nonetheless, a number of a number of meetings were held between Pibit and various NAGRIK and DB Board Managing Directors, as well as local government officials. And the first one, it is through one of these meetings that Pibit was permitted to carry out a survey of the allocated 20 hectares by His Excellency as efforts continued for the acquisition of the remaining 143 hectares as specified or indicated in the master plan. B, as a result, Pibit carried out a survey of the 20 hectares. Then C, Pibit's effort to acquire and fence off the 20 hectares of land and start development of the ITP, as had been earmarked in our budget in that year, at least in phases, hit a snag between the Maif and NAGRIK DB who did not permit Pibit to acquire the initial 20 hectares. The earlier Member of Parliament then, Honorable Wilson Kajueenge, came in and enlisted support that led to the latest efforts, but still Maif and NAGRIK and DB have not responded to that. At this juncture, I have to register my appreciation for the support of the local community of Sangha, which even provided Pibit with fully fledged office in Sangha Municipality. And beyond that, at intervals, they have called us to account about these developments. And we kept on informing them about the issuing meetings and their infertility. And point eight, allow me to inform you that in FY 2023-24, due to the pressure from this local community, Pibit budgeted for the establishment of a large scale token bakery on the already designated 20 hectares as our initial impetus for the rollout of the ITP. Honore Minister, allow me to confirm that the consultant has already been identified and will be on board by mid this month. Difficult to imagine what will happen when the consultant starts his geo-cadastro and other survey investigations necessary for designs of mega bakery without a formal undertaking between Pibit, NAGRIK, DB, and Maif Town Council and District. I want to say that for intent and purpose, Pibit had wanted already to have established a borehole as a starting point for water generation for this first coming project. At this juncture, I wish to inform you that all communication on the Pibit allocated land matter is available with Pibit paddock for ease of reference for anybody who may be concerned. In conclusion, Honorable Minister and members here, I'm sincerely grateful for this meet and hopeful that today, today's meeting will clear all hurdles that have impeded the establishment of the banana industrial development park at Sangha as per the master plan. While the master plan will be reviewed upon release of the entire 143 hectares, Pibit paddock has meanwhile included the establishment of a mega bakery in its budget for FY 2024-2025. The mega bakery equipment is expected to be in the country within 18 months. And this would, should coincide with completion of appropriate warehousing and the necessary infrastructure, power, water, external and internal roads. On behalf of the Board and Management, here represented by the cow of this great district, I sign off Reverend Florence Isavia Amrangga. Allow me to recognize my friend, former town clerk and now Honorable Member of Parliament.
Our Chief Minister and Minister, Honorable Minister Bright. Echoko banza, nishavango mtiromunga rosaman, nnumachi ira, minister kustaya ira. Professor Reveranda Amrangga. Our Chair Manel C5, Dan Mukago. Cow and your technical team. Ultra person 063s present. Councillors present. Avantu vaka mbitkandi, mawakutaka ruru, kandava zirevaitu. Honorable Bright, ninzarwakunu. So awava riaha, niimbetezi, nomahandi, jompaka haria. Sobryomoe namushti nisache. Moinchirizechoko banza, simerhangoku thamagara, echikachireva, tuchireva. Egi no projecti, presidential pledge. Ebunze ya ragani se kariho. Kuhihanku miyilne etano. Kushtia hati, project hatu turiondre ne tekinga shape. Buen simerhanga, avokwa ketera zamagarechitukachireva. Echi akabiru, nyanangkuteremka mihanga, engarozaman. Egi projecti, itu yon tu, ntugamba ho, nupregi, nokura ganzaku. Professor Amrangga ka, akatomo inkora na tanechiravusheni, mwenariyo na shumachuruhura. Egi no projecti, students tamamani, mwekawa ho. Konkachinkusimera mka mihanga, nokteka teka, akagaraka tomunkora. Echi mtajangu chorovi. Echi akabiru, nyanangkumusime, amakogo gue sente, timuzaku gamba vindi, konkomba diti. President, nama ba diti tu ntudhimu zankamembazwa Parlament, konkama kama ba diti na President. Omakogo gue nesenti, omba diti, harumasi ente zebituti. Ebende Minister nazaku vugamba, konkana nimbashta myomparamente. So uktuaventui, hinguzankandi zrenta, mkaandu ho, kandakan inchadre, sone inchimanya. Niendakusima mnonga, mnonga. Honorable Minister, thank you so, so, so much. Echoko banza, oktere zombazgoku dementize itu. Okutayokshava, kuituntueto, moiterenshongaya abatwa. Kudira, abatwobon terako zirede, tkatayenshongaya itu yebituti. Tkamgambirizo va yiturukuru, akijaka tumeera, honkumu untumkuru, kande kamestori in charge. Professor Amrangga, we thank you. We thank you so, so, so much. Thank you for doing tangible work. I know what is in Busheni, I have ever visited you. I know what you studying, we thank you. Thank you for supporting our government. Na ninsima professor Amrangga, niimanyechirukusheni. Niindiramkumkuleva haria, muretichurukendu, mmeju. Mwen nimusima, okatomo inkora, yebiteka teko ya President. Kandu musime mnonga, mweva ze, Chair Manel C5, I know how you have been pushing for this. Niindangoba nyacheruhura, musime Chairman Mukago. Nakachi kote, council, baromruwoda, kumkamishche katie tu. Okuhihendare? I, konkashona, mkochite, kuate, sitemo, muretriha, hey. Yes, wa, nuretriya, nakorebu. So, bakansara zvaitu, kuwatamsana, Chairman, ibakata mamani, kureva angu factory, yebituti. Bu yomoya reva, muntiditinga. No manira karimoturka bas, konkakumogaitamaraka, gawa meidi, avantuva manichimukuetenga. Chairman, ntukusima, ntukusima mnonga. Oh, shti nisaminista, egomboraziria, ogonchairman, wenyaka shaxara. Ntima nsa ngunya kashaxara. Andru waachijaa, juetire, egomboraye, kuhijakutuganda, nguntuetenga, akora factory, yebituti. Mayor, watawunu council. At least, watawunu council, numanya manu, safara, teyungu, biya, biya factory, yebituti, vantu. Tapetere katukaniwa, kuhihariari, since the era time up to date, we thank you so much. Awunaventire tawunklakaha, tukashita mana council, kuitirisanangwaha, chiziimbete, itu. Ngom office, nchetsuina, twesquizinde, sushitamina, yebituti. Itu, oke, stawakora, katawunu council, tova hereza na office, ngvatu, richi muha. Hataku, chindichona, nchikanchi, manisa, nguntuetenga factoryju. Buene, nimbasima, kandu, nmanito positions, ntutu, raho. Cow, we thank you, we thank you so much, we know how you have been following up. Ntubasimera chimwe, echin kushendi, yo. Honorable Minister, why you see all these people here? It is because we want to tell you that we have banana in large scale. Twen yebituti, twasap feeding a factory, tfeeding a factory, kandu, tya hagatiya center. Abu yisindu, novenja, abakazon, novenja, abamba, ranvenja, twenant feeding a factory, yebituti, ekuveliya ha, hagati. Konkaba, nubaba, ntwasanga. Namwen, navare sherevenja. Ogomshere, oke, nanyangwame, mte komission, ogomshere, oke. Nuakutiza, yokhinga, yebituti, okowaitu. Dushere, he has it. Oi neyekasinda. Thirty acres. Kandu, uito, onu kujanawuruwa, katari nensiyona, kari ready, fta yebituti. So, I know what we mean. Mandera, mandera beninfana, wengua zoma, nogunheadmaster, wanjia, councilmesa. Mandera imka. Nkamashende, zangwazoma, natumunde, chon bituti. So, ntumanyortu, tjerweini. Mwena, nimbama, nyanimanjoku mukhinga, yebituti. So, Honorable Minister, itu, yebituti, tivine, factory, ntwasaku, difeedinga, nyanya, tugine, ntwasaku, nderayo. Entoche zetu, ben turvery ready. Itu, nkaturuhura, districti, turvery ready. Na nyanajana, yakira, Minister, weti, agumaha, we, nka kandaru, mka meitu, kandi, atechti, nisaa. Bionna, tuavukora, mwevari, ketera zakaruu.
Embezwa government, mweina. Avarisa, na vinyavaryaha. Mukama simwe.
Asimwe mnonga.
Mwena, shemero, mnonga, kuhijaha. Ayizobe, kujeribina shovorra. Ba MPZ, vani, bombi, va kijavaniva. Kanu, Chairman Mukago, ya ampandi chira. Safari, meyawa, nyuk, jomoffice, ya ndi. Ova de matazi. Natika teka, ngumbeni, nyanajana, ischira, ebintu, mshovorre. Attention, ngazande, tanivi, yoku banza, nokshovorra, ayitakaria factory, yebituti, yepresentia twayi. "Eh, chakabiri", "Tukawahi, bajiro", "Ntwe, dangwe, eh, nyamaza anyu", "Entezanyu, zirese, ente", "Mreche, kuseerwa", "Kuma, kujibaji, raha", "Tuwa, gurana, rore, erukusia", "Eh, nyama, ntuva sakudi tawara, ka mpala", "Na, nmbasa, kuhendera, muditwa, zire", "Aoka, rore, rukutwara, ente, makumiya, makumiya, viri", "Yeva, ente, zazwajire", "Nituwa, ente, kaga", "Eh, chirukuma, nsa, no, no, chireza, sente, za, transporti", "Kando, di siyo, mukataraka, kuke, sente, nji", "So, buen, shongaza, ndeta", "Konkani, za, gaba, viri, eh, viniya, mani, za, kugamra, kuliifu", "Hati, takarya anyu", "Professor Moranga, yavagamra", "Itaka, present, takanda, girah, itakanarba", "Ah, ah, vechi tongorechi, tuji, ana, gurik, wah, no objection", "Konkatu, atunga, eh, bezu, buiwi", "Eh, chokubanza, eh, sentezokta, ndakazkaz, takabiru", "Eh, chindechi, akabiri", "Haru, mta, kawanyu, murkuma, nyaha", "Aka, nde, yevita, ka, eh, ya, government", "Yo, yes, akani, namazuma, ninga, gamakukugari",
"Aminna",
"Ay, gi, gi, ak, tumesuji, yajira, nguchiapa, va, chshazimu", "Omjenzwa, kashabaraha, hanga, yajira, tutrukuyo, chshazamu", "Aoka, chiriya, miyake, tano, yajiri, kuahu", "Kachiho, tutrukuyo, kchita", "So, yasare, yarabeni, ma, ya, tunguchiapa", "Ati, eh, choma, eh, chi, takka, eh, chomechi, eh, cha, nyuche, eh, che, eh, eh, chi, teche, eh, chi, yevituji", "Tukchita, mka shozinu, chitahan, ta, ah, ah, ati, meki di", "So, buen, nu", "Eh, viti, wka, dakuzam, mnonga, konkani, nakuba, hamza", "Mguechi, omachi, eh, 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 yevituji", "Eh, sentezirio, mbadi ti", "Turya, mheru, buku, mariya, ku, hereza, Professor Moranga", "Itakeriyo", "Hari, haru, kuta, ndaka, nesh, iniri, takankukuri, ariha, ve, ra, rodi, ngiramp",
"Asante, sana",
"So, buen, nu, awa, yaha, ntimani", "Avant corruption, wa, enu, akorar, firezu", "Zaji, kuwa", "Professor Morango, umre", "I invite you to my office and we, "We, we make a final assault on the, on the site", "I have come with doctor, Vene, is doctor, Vene, here", "Haru, kuliifu", "So", "We are going to sort this matter once and for all", "Aten, nza, gamba, eh, omachi, yevituji", "Itu, ah, vissinyo, ntuwa, chizetu, chisata, mze", "Eh, chomechi, kabe, nichu, zu, itu", "Chaku, eh, nichi, zha", "Konkabue, ni, we, mka, dierumdishe", "Eh, chokubanza, meri, muini, takarya, government, eh, riya", "Eh, chakabiri, Professor Moranga, tava, gamra, va, ah, va, Professor, akatuka, nganga, ni, umstet, tause", "Kande, miri, nguchi, eh, 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 cham, eh, choma, zizengi", "Aoka, ni, tu, twinita, kari, yempunji", "Ata, ah, wa, tamaka, kori, ngusanga, inu, rudi, yusha, nukuchireya, kuliya",
"Asante, sana",
"Konkabue, nu", "Itan, tijak, sharama, juz, tunde, rudi, yusha, ni, tijak, tuni, chi, nde, choma", "Nava, churua, nichi, zaku, zain", "Konkabue, nichi, runi, chet, chomechi", "Position, deru, ho, urkuzaku, adwi, nga", "Abu, yisindro, chireyi", "Kandi, ntunire, ngatunga, nes, ente", "Va, va, va, manbawa, nyu, Parliament, bawa, gamri", "Ntue, na, kudektinga, ha, ni, yisindro", "Eh, chamanisa, mi, kabi, eh, yevituji, ni, ba, faktori, lewe, tatorhari", "Eh, chakabiri, haru, churura, na, ni, nbara, districti, ziru, eh, yom proximity", "Haru, tungamo, haru, wampara, haru, mbara, haru, mbara, siti", "Haru, churura, haru, ivanda, haru, kazo, haru, li, antonde, haru, rakai", "Nivanda, ivanda, na, digama", "Na, masak", "Ah, masak, anu, vasan, ukutwara, ka mpala, konka, eh, vi", "Eh, chadi, vasaku, mara, yevituji, viu", "Ntua, tu, adiram, omukashogu, amani", "Na, oktavaria, yevituji, vi, itu", "Nchi, zaku, tu, yama, mnonga", "Itu, nka, nyangala", "Kandi", "Nka, nyangkori, nipatiki, rahu, kichi, nichi, nichi, omachani", "Eh, chokubanza, eh, chomechi", "Nchi, tawo, muti, nu", "Changusia", "Chi, chere, isha, obuiri", "Mwe, chituji, churku, vasaku, marahu", "Ah, mudara, chitasiskiri", "Aoka, kukuchto, msa, nu", "Professor Moranga, haru, ngkani, stay in powder form", "Ah", "Forever", "Ati, chirukuma, nsa, eh, omuiri",